The staff is going to be running most of this meeting. It's pretty much staff-driven. The first one will be reports from the city administrator and the director of the library. And I'm also going to ask if at the tail end of that presentation, if Ms. Betty Hooton from the library board has got some additional comments to make those. But the reason we're here today is because back in '04, we started a process of addressing Westside Library issue needs, and we came up with what, at the time, seemed a less-than-perfect place to have the library, which was storefront rental property on Cervantes. I remember back then, people complained about it. That was the worst place in the world for it to be. And we were searching for a new home, and an opportunity arose. And that process is now several years down the road. And as of next week, we've got a ward of bid coming up on the committee of the whole agenda for the new center down at Legion Field. But the history of that's going to come from the staff. With Mr. Reynolds sitting there frowning like he is, he's probably got two or three things he's going to correct me on. But after that, council will discuss it, then we'll move on to discussion of library hours and management. I've been told that we've probably got some very good news on that. I think Mr. Reynolds met with the new chair of the county commission, and I don't know the details of it, but I just understand that it may be very, very, very good news. Anyway, at the end of all that, we're going to open it up for public comment. So if you have questions, just ask you to hold those to the very, very end. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, everyone. I wanted to start this morning to basically talk about moving ahead. I think everybody recognizes, and everybody's had the opportunity to review, the letter that I sent to former county administrator Randy Oliver some time ago. But I'd really like to get away from that and move forward and see if we can come to an agreement with the county in regards to not only a short-term solution with our library hours, but even more importantly, a long-term solution that essentially takes a look at how we fund the system as a whole. Mr. President, you're correct. Both the mayor and I did meet with Mr. Valentino and Mr. Newsom, who is the acting county administrator, as well as with budget staff for the county, on Monday. We were able to relatively quickly recognize that we needed to find a new way forward. And I'll get into that in a little bit, once Darlene has had the opportunity to do her presentation in regards to the system as a whole, as where we currently are. But essentially, this presentation and my presentation will be very forward-looking. In regards to the branch that Mr. President had talked about that is going to city council, we do have a city council award for bid actually coming at the next meeting. That is a $2.65 million total project cost. Will ultimately be $3.225 million. It is a major investment. It was over $286,000 for it to be designed as part of it, as a library. It is designed as a library. There have been multiple public input sessions into that building. And at this point, as we've, as Mr. President has stated, we will have that item coming to council next week. And, you know, one of the things, if I may, that is often frustrating for staff of any public entity, and I know that oftentimes those that are elected have some frustration with this as well, is that we try to do everything that we need to do. We try to X all the Bucs, as we try to get all the public input. And then both staff and then ultimately, an elected body will make decisions based upon that. And then suddenly, at the very end of the ninth or 12th hour, we're being asked to put the brakes on it. You can put the brakes on this at a significant cost to this organization. You know, we would have to totally redesign the facility. Again, that was about 286,000, if I remember correctly. So clearly, that will be an issue. The other concept that has been floating around is that, well, we can have that, and we can also have the other Westside Library. The reality is, ladies and gentlemen, is that we can't afford the library system we have. Only by the work of budgetary staff and library staff are we able to bring forward to you, in conjunction with the county, a solution for just this year in the short term. And certainly, it's not something that is sustainable on our current system. And so, the idea that we could open up yet another facility simply is fiscally impossible. That being said, Ms. Howell will take the opportunity to get everybody up to speed on the current system, and will be available then to ask questions prior to us talking about the short-term and long-term solutions as we discussed with Commissioner Valentino and his staff on Monday. Thank you.
Okay. And before Ms. Howell goes on, one of the points that I really wanted to make and failed to do so is the reason we're here today is because the public wanted to be heard on this. And almost to a fault, this council has given the public pretty much priority for the opportunity for input. And what I started seeing developing over the last few meetings is that, on completely unrelated issues, we were getting dominated in other city business. And the library issue, quite frankly, was just getting in the way of doing the rest of the city's business. And I thought it best if we just had a special time devoted to the library and nothing else. And by the way, because this is a special committee of the whole, we cannot discuss any issues outside of the library on the agenda. Ms. Myers?
Yes. Well, I just want to expand on the purpose of the meeting. I clearly thought the purpose of this meeting was, of course, for the public to have input, but primarily for us to come here and solve a problem. The problem being the library hours that need to be extended for the benefit of our citizens, and also solutions regarding the West Florida Branch Libraries. So my purpose in being here is not just to listen to the citizens, but to take action, solve this problem today. And so, that's what I hope we accomplish today.
Well, the hours are the second thing on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Ms. Howell?
Good morning, members of council, members of council, Mr. President, and the public. I'm here today to discuss the library hours and the impact that the budget cuts had on the library system. I'd like to begin with a brief overview of the system. The West Florida Public Library System currently consists of four facilities within the city limits, the main, Tryon, Westside, and Genealogy branches, and two facilities, Southwest and Century, and a Bookmobile in the county. Funding for the system is based on percentage of usage by city and county residents, so that each time a patron uses their library card, whether that individual lives in the city or the county, that information is recorded by our automation system. The cost for the administration, courier, our online catalog, and the processing of all materials is included in the main library's budget. The next slide will show you the percentage of usage by city and county residents. You can see the main, Tryon, and Westside branches, which are located in the city, and Southwest Century and the Bookmobile located in the county. For the fiscal year '13's budget, the county mandated a 5% reduction from fiscal year '12's budget, which resulted in a loss of funding of $755,400. As a result, reductions were made to part-time personnel, subscriptions, and books. And this slide shows which reductions were made and the percentages taken from the city and county facilities. So that overall, system-wide, we reduced personnel by 31%, subscriptions 15%, and books by 83%. And the next slide will explain some of the factors in how the cuts affected the library's hours of operation. The county's new Malino Library was expected to open this fall. And according to a gentleman's agreement between the city and the county, the entity who opened a facility usually funded the first year of operations. Now, Malino was not included in the fiscal year 2013's proposed budget. At the end of the budget year, the county did supply $125,000 for books and computers, and the Friends of the Library donated $10,000 for materials. Without funding for Malino and a grand opening scheduled in mid-October, we thought it important to assign hours to the Malino Branch Library, because we knew how much the people in that area were looking forward to a library in that area. So in order to accomplish that, we had to share the hours with the other county facilities. In order to determine the new hours, we looked at circulation and foot traffic statistics. And you can see the average hourly circs at the main library are 72, Tryon 83, Westside 17, Southwest 37, and Century 8. We also sought to minimize the disruption of services to patrons by remaining open throughout the week instead of closing on Mondays, and we ensured that at least one branch per evening would be open. We also chose to have some consistency in the opening and closing times, and the evening hours were rotated among the libraries, so that there was at least one branch open each evening of the week. Providing hours for Malino had a greater impact on the Century location. We also alternated the days that they were open in order to ease the scheduling of the full-time personnel who would be assigned there. Now, the next slide shows the original and revised hours, based on the information that I've just supplied to you. You can see the original hours were at 325 for the system, and after the cuts, those hours dropped to 268. Now, at the end of fiscal year '12, we had carryover funds in the amount of $355,554, which we proposed to be allocated to the line items above for personnel and subscriptions in order to restore hours to the library. How would these additional funds impact the system? These additional 344 hours could be distributed throughout the system for a total of 344 hours. This would place Tryon, Westside, Southwest, and Malino at identical hours, and the Genealogy and Century libraries would remain unchanged at their original hours. And before I close, I wanted to give you some of our goals and objectives for fiscal year '13, according to our strategic plan. We mean to investigate sustainable sources of funding for the library system. The library must become a must-see destination and must have, and an institution for the entire community. We want to improve efficiency of operations, internal communications, and staff training. We want to increase publicity and community presence, and we have tried to do that. We have a Facebook page now and a Twitter account, and we're actively trying to get our programming out there. We want to utilize technology to increase efficiency of operations, enhance programming, and we have received three grants recently, one from the National Science Foundation for a Discover Earth project. We've been awarded a Florida Humanities Council grant, and that programming will coincide with the events for Viva 500. And we've also received a history grant, and we have actively participated with other community organizations in order to do that. We also want to support literacy efforts, optimize the hours and operation and staffing levels, encourage coffee shops, and use book sales at facilities with the space to accommodate them. We're in the process of formulating a new five-year plan for 2014 through '19, and that would be the task of the Blue Ribbon Committee. And we also need to revise our inter-local agreement. And that's the end of my presentation.
Yes, sir.
And if I may, kind of go into some detail then, in regards to the solution that staff is bringing to the table, and I appreciate Councilwoman Myers' thought process in that regard, that we actually want to do something with this meeting. Essentially, we have 355,000 and change in carryforward funding that was identified Friday by staff that we could apply for this next year. For equitable distribution throughout the system. To give us 87% of the hours that we would have, had we had a full budget. Except for Malino, because if you'll remember, Malino was never programmed to be in the budget, since it was the understanding of the city that that would be something the county would fund the first year.
Bill, I think your audio just went off. Am I right, audience?
Oh, I got my thing on it. Okay. So essentially, what we have at this point is programming Malino into the system with 40 hours, which clearly is going to be, at least from staff's initial analysis, more used than the current Century Library, just based upon where it's located. The thought process is, is that by this equitable distribution, you know, we bring the hours up to 87%, and that's something that the county is looking at right now, and I presume that they will be bringing this forward to talk about it this week in their meetings. This is what we proposed to Commissioner Valentino and staff on Monday. There seemed to be a lot of agreement that this was a workable solution. And so, the concept would be, and this is something that council will ultimately have to sign off on, because, you know, we're making a transfer here, which would come in December, by the way. The thought process is, is that if we were able to do this, this buys us a year, a year in which we can then look at that long-term solution. Now, let me talk a little bit about the long-term solution, because, you know, the carryforward funding is actually the easy part. The not-so-easy part is the long-term solution. Commissioner Valentino and his staff brought forward the notion on Monday that, you know, there is an MSTU that is currently available for the library system in the county. The MSTU does not cover the city limits. So the thought process was, is that we actually look at the MSTU funding the system. The problem with that is, or I shouldn't call it a problem, some of the things that we have to do in order to get there is that the city has to actively be a part of that MSTU, which requires action on both the part of the county and the city. This would have to happen relatively quickly. And before I forget, Mr. President, I would like a motion at some point to put this on the table for our next full committee of the whole meeting, for a full vetting. We're still in the process of looking at some of the issues that we have to iron out with this particular concept, but I would like to bring that forward for discussion by this body at the next...
On the November 13th meeting?
Correct. Yes, sir.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Ours. That passes unanimously. Dr. Cox?
The reality of the current system is that it's managed by a system that only is responsible for about 25% of the patrons. For whatever reason, that's where we find ourselves. As part of this process, we would certainly like to look at having the body, the organization that has the most skin in the game, if you will, be responsible for running the system. And we did enter into some discussions about how that would occur with the county and having the county take over the system, with essentially, they having responsibility for running the system, as we do now, but the city having control of their own buildings and the county having control of their own buildings. The disparity that you see, where essentially, you have 75% of the individuals using the system being county people, is just going to increase, once you have Malino. Preliminary indications, it could be 82% to 83% once you have Malino come fully on That obviously is something else that would have to, once we looked at the MSTU and moved forward with that, that would be the next step in the chain, if you will, for us to find that long-term solution. I guess I'd kind of like to open it up for questions at this point. I will say that, you know, this is something that essentially started the process on Monday. We still have a lot of homework to do on it, but it does seem to be a long-term solution. The county is going to be looking at it in their meetings coming up in the next couple of weeks as well. But, you know, once we have the ability to take a look at all of the issues and then can give you a formal presentation at the next committee of the whole, based upon what I've seen so far, it seems to be a viable working plan where what we currently have in place, for whatever reason, currently does not work. So, back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Myers?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to thank the library staff and Mr. Reynolds, and I see quite a few county folk here that I've worked with and known for years, have a lot of respect for. And I'm really gratified to hear that the city and county are working toward a solution and not looking backwards. And so, I just want to commend all of the players who've come together in a positive manner. I would like to ask if I could have a copy of your PowerPoint. I really could not see the PowerPoint. We don't have the best lighting in here for PowerPoint, so in the future, I mean, I personally like to get PowerPoints in advance, especially when you're looking at a lot of numbers. But the bottom line is, regarding the Tryon Library, because that's obviously the district that I represent, and the Tryon Library is extremely important to that district, we don't have a community center, a lot of groups use that library between 6:00 and 9:00 in the evening. How is this solution of having 87, getting us to our 87% hours, going to impact the hours at that particular library?
Yes, ma'am. And essentially, what you're looking at is it starts an hour later in the morning. So as opposed to opening at 9:00 a.m., it'll open at 10:00.
Okay. And how late will it stay open? That's the issue.
Yeah. It will stay open until 8:00 p.m. on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and will stay open until 4:00 p.m. on Friday and Saturday, which I believe are the current...
And those are based on circulation statistics?
Correct.
So they will be open longer, Monday through Thursday, when the library is most heavily used?
Okay. So Monday and Thursday?
Monday, Monday through Thursday.
Till 8:30?
Eight.
Eight.
Till eight.
Correct.
And that's the time that they always closed, was eight?
Okay. Now, community groups who are meeting there, say, whose meeting starts at typically, say, 6:00 or 6:30, and they go beyond 8:00, is that still going to be allowed?
Yes.
Let's see. There was something else I was going to ask. Oh, oh, I know what it is. As I understand it, the formula is based on usage, okay? And usage is determined on how many library cards you have out?
Each time a person uses their library card, that information is recorded. It's not the number of items they take out, but simply when they use their library card.
Okay. So you're telling me I need to start using my library card?
Yes.
Okay. Folks, y'all heard that. Get to the library. Well, this is what I want to bring up regarding, when I, my library card, of course, has my current address on it, because I've lived there a long time, and I intend to live there for a while. But say I move into the county. I could still use that library card. It would have my city address on it, but I would live in the county. So how do you verify the accuracy of your usage statistics?
Well, we hope that when patrons move, they will notify us of the change of address, but the cards do expire every two years, and when you come in to renew them, you have to provide proof of your current address.
Well, I'm embarrassed to say mine probably expired. And I'll renew it, because I want to be counted. Thank you.
And one of the beauties of this long-term solution, as we're currently ferreting it out, is that there's no need to track the usage anymore. And then people can, you know, whether their city or county is irrelevant, because the funding system isn't based upon that.
Exactly.
One thing I did forget to mention in regards to how the system would be managed, the concept is that you actually have a library board with real power, and that the library board actually manages the system. And you would have three people from the county that would be appointed by the county, and two appointed by the city. So, you know, we all know the incredible power of the advocacy of the library groups, not only here, but frankly, in a lot of communities. But this is an opportunity to not only allow them to be an advocacy group, but also allow them to manage the system. And again, a lot of things that have yet to be worked out, and a lot of things, you know, this is not a, it's a long-term solution that's going to take a lot of work if we ultimately get there, but that's kind of what we're looking at in concept right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Spencer?
Thank you. One of the items, or goals and objectives that is on the list is number seven, actively engage community partners. Could you please review and refresh, especially me, my knowledge, or lack of knowledge, regarding who those current community partners are?
Okay. Well, we're working with UWF. Let me see if I can remember all of them. I believe Megan's organization will be working with us on the Discover Earth project.
And that would be?
IHMC.
Thank you. Which part of your life? Which part of your life? I wanted to know. UWF, IHMC.
The school system, the school system, PJC, or PSC. I know that there are others. There are several others, actually. I believe the Historical Society. I'd have to get back to you with the entire list, but there are quite a few.
Well, actually, I think you shed enough light on my question to lead to my next comment, then. You've listed organizations that also are somewhat public revenue or tax-dependent. I see them as, these parts... I see them as be, as these partners having a level of vulnerability that still puts our goal, and that is to provide reliable, consistent access to resources, to educational resources, somewhat, again, at risk, depending on the, what may happen to those organizations or governmental entities. And what I'm suggesting is that we certainly are not the only isolated community having this discussion. And as I may have, may have mentioned recently, is when I traveled to the West Coast and I visited the library in the Lafayette, the town of Lafayette, California, but they had put together their learning consortium, which has 12 basically partners, consortium members, admittedly very impressive because of their location, the proximity that they have, for instance, to Berkeley, they've got John F. Kennedy University as a partner, but several well-endowed entities. And as I spoke to that library manager and asked about kind of the history of where they got and how they got there, it was not the crisis that has assembled us today, but they saw themselves heading down a path, I think, that would lead to where we are today. And so I suggest that we have an opportunity and responsibility, an opportunity to educate members in our community that they have a responsibility to be our partners. And I'm, I mean, some large organizations, corporations, that may have a national presence, but they also have a local presence here. They may have national headquarters elsewhere. But I think that can
That's part of our plan.
Yeah, good. Glad to hear that, because I'm looking and been studying a template that has used that plan. That's it.
Brett?
I didn't have anything profound to say, except that I am glad we're having, I was the one vote against having this, because I was like, you know, I don't know what we'll accomplish, but I think that having this meeting has spurred us to at least get this conversation going. And, and following Councilman Spencer's comments that, you know, I think that for so long we've been just, oh, we'll just cut, and we'll cut, and we'll cut. And once you've cut and cut, you don't have time to go out and make all the friends you need to make and get those commitments. So, so I'm hopeful that by having a community conversation about libraries and their value, it will help us remember that they are important places. I've met people from all walks. I actually need to run over the library today myself, but mine hasn't expired, Councilwoman Myers. I knew how it worked, because recently mine, you know, it was the two-year renewal, and I was like, oh, okay. But, you know, I think that, that it's, it's an important thing for this community, and so many people forget, you know, they'll tell me, well, why do I pay for internet at home when they give it for free at the library? And I was like, well, it's your choice. You can spend your time going over to the library and signing up for your half-hour slot, but you choose to pay at home, because you don't want that inconvenience, but other people can't, you know, have to make a different choice. But I think it's, it's a valuable resource, and we do need to be saying, how are we going to fund it to the level that this community deserves? So I appreciate your effort on it. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm going to go to the new dean of the City Council, Dr. PC Wu. Senior member, yes.
Sorry, speak up.
Yes.
You're the new senior.
A senior. Thank you very much, Mr. President. This MSTU that we're speaking about, isn't that how Gainesville operates their libraries?
I'm not certain. I would have to check into that.
Okay. I believe, is there anybody in the room that knows the answer to that? This, this MSTU, that's a special taxing.
It is, yes, sir.
Right. And that, years ago, John Dunworth, who was very active at that time on the library board, suggested moving in that direction. And it makes an awful lot of sense, because you really set aside funds from that particular area to use specifically for that purpose. And so you're not in the annual going into trying to get funds every single year to resurrect this. And I think Gainesville will give you a very good idea of how they did it, and there's several other counties that operate under that system. But what you say, have said so far, it makes an awful lot of sense, with the board and the distribution, with the control on what to do. That way, I think the county has a direct seat at the table, the city has a direct seat at the table, and yet we're still operating the same system. So I think it has an awful lot of merit. As I understand is, the, it has to be put out for a referendum, but my understanding in most cases, the way it operates, is only people who are interested in the library bother to go down and vote. And so therefore, if programmed correctly, as far as giving out the information to the public, it has a very high percentage chance of passing. And if it does, as you said, Mr. Reynolds, it could really take us out of this endless argument on who owes what and so on. So, for example, right now, I have no objection to the $350,000, but I just spoke to my friends from the county, but I can see them saying next year, well, gee, if they found $350,000 this year to supplement it, we'll let them find that again next year, you know? And that's the type of situation that I'm, you know, scared of getting into. If it's a one-time thing, get us over a gap to help people, then I have no problem doing it. I just don't want it to becoming a reoccurring theme down the line, so. And so basically, that's my, you know, my comments. But I commend you for that, you know, MSTU, I think it has a great deal of promise. I think we have a good chance of passing it, and if we do, I think it will solve all the problems.
And the carryforward, I think it's important to recognize that that, that funding, you know, obviously was due to the hard work of staff and the system, making sure that they weren't spending money unnecessarily.
Yes.
And, you know, that's, that's, that's key to this, and that is not a, that is never a, a given at any, at the end of any year. And so it certainly is not something that could be banked on from year to year to year. But clearly, as, as both finance staff and library were looking at the numbers on Friday, it became apparent that there would be this, this carryforward available. And it seemed, you know, obviously, the mayor and Commissioner Valentino had already scheduled the meeting to talk about the bigger issue. And, you know, it was, it was good to be able to come to the table and have us come to the solution for the short term, and the county come to the table for a solution in the long term. And I, I, I certainly want to pass on both the mayor and my thanks to the county for their willingness to sit at the table and take a hard look at this, and, and recognize that, you know, we can find a solution together to save what is essentially one of the pillars of this community.
Could I make one other comment?
Sure.
Dr. Horton, I was looking for you, and I didn't look straight ahead. Wasn't that what Dr. Dunworth was trying to, in a small group, trying to work, was the MSTU years ago? Or was that before you became involved?
Ms. Suton, microphone, please.
By the way, Gainesville does have a special taxing district.
I'm sorry.
Like the internet. Gainesville does have a special taxing district.
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah, it was. The MSTU was put on the table, and then it was not funded, and for whatever reasons the county had. So that's, that's, it's there. And I don't know about a referendum vote, Mr. Reynolds. Isn't that just a vote of the county commission?
It would be on the county side. What we need to determine is, since we're bringing, the, the concept is to bring the city in, whether the city has to have a referendum for
Oh, the city would have to have a
I, I don't know the answer to that question, yeah.
Okay. I understood that it was, you know, three, as they say over at the county commission, it takes three, and that's
For the county's part, that's correct.
Right.
But I don't know yet whether or not it's going to require a referendum for the city's participation.
Okay.
Because the city is specifically carved out of that MSTU, so.
Okay, all right. I just want to say one other thing. The library board is made up of county and city members. We have worked together for years, not even thinking about whether we lived county, city, whatever. This system, we want to keep this system together. That was one of the main goals I had six months ago. I had, Dr. Canada had, she's one of the county representatives. And the system must stay together, because there is strength in the system. And the state looks to us up here in the panhandle. The state library is very, very interested in the decisions we make about our library system up here. They were very, very concerned about us when I attended the state meeting in June. I mean, they came running to us and asked us, is it okay? Is it okay? So they're very concerned about this. And, and, and we, you know, we're very concerned about it, too. Your downtown library is the jewel in our crown. We know it. We've seen it down there, and if you all haven't gotten down there for a tour or whatever, it brought me to tears when I saw the children's department last Friday night. I mean, it is absolutely our beauty. People will come. We've been of that mentality for years. When we built Century, they told us, nobody will ever use it. And now, 50 percent of the people up there have library cards. I mean, that's unbelievable. So the downtown library will have more library cards issued from that library, too, and more people will keep coming, and more people will want to use it because of the coffee shop and the bookstore atmosphere that we will create in there. Our community relations director is, Darlene, correct me, a contract worker, Dondi Roper, part-time. Her hours were cut. Dondi applied for a Viva Florida grant from the Florida Humanities Council. She received it, we received it, $8,000 right away. And according to the state library, Pensacola, Pensacola's downtown library will be the centerpiece of the Viva Florida celebration for this area. So we're very proud of that. Also, you need to know that the grand opening for downtown is going to be January 10, 11, and 12. And we want the whole world down there, too. So that's something we're looking forward to. The library board, back to the budget, has supported and worked diligently to make this all happen. And the idea of having more power for the library board, I think, should include a representative from the city council and the county commission. I really think we ought to think about that. And a councilman or woman, a commissioner, because I really do. I have a listing of counties here in Florida, and a lot of them do have county commission and city council members who are part of the library board, so I'd like to see that happen. I'd also like to see you all trotting in and out of the library. Okay? I mean, I see Megan all the time, but, but I really would. The staff, do you know how it would increase morale for the staff to see Sam Hall in the library? It does. The word goes out when the mayor walks in with his little boy. So they love that, they really do. We want Dondi Roper, our community relations gal, to have more hours. I mean, that, she is really a big, she writes our grants, too, so that's a wonderful thing. Thank you.
And Dr. Wu had some comments. Okay, good. All right. Ms. Myers?
Well, I just wanted to thank Ms. Wooten for her comments and, and ideas about having representatives from the county and the city on the board. I think that's a good idea. I want to thank you for all the hard work you do and the board. I just wanted to speak briefly about the second objective up there about libraries being a destination. I think that's extremely important. I feel that now we're going to have a downtown library that's definitely going to be a destination. I have been down there. I will tell you, the Tryon Library is definitely a destination. I'm over there all the time, a lot of times, and with the beautiful park we have there, it makes it an added attraction for families to bring their children to the park, to go to the library, and it's, it's, it's just a great destination in the city. And so I think it's very important that we really strive to make our libraries places of destination. And I know I bring up Fairhope a lot. I love Fairhope. It's a small town, and one of the things that impresses me the most about Fairhope is its library. For such a tiny little town, it has a tremendous library. It takes up a city block, and it's two stories. And it's, it's a place you want to go to. And I think that the Tryon Library and the downtown library, I think we've really created two, two great destinations in our cities with particularly those two libraries. But that's something I'm definitely on board with, and I'm glad to see that it's one of the objectives in your strategic plan.
Ms. Myers, is there anything more you wanted to talk about on the hours at the library?
On the what?
Hours.
Well, I'm satisfied that we're going to be able to, no.
Okay.
I might want to talk a little more about the Westside Library. I know
That's coming up next.
That's coming up.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Ms. Suton?
My name is Alexa Kennedy, and I'm on the library board, and I just wanted to have you all note this one thing that happened today here. Although we have a lot of good news, I want you to note that the 85 percent of the book budget that was decreased was not restored. That's a very important thing that we need to keep in mind. Having the library open is good, but having good things in it is also important.
How much would it cost to restore the book budget?
For fiscal year 13, it looks like we'll have approximately $205,000 for the book budget, and we do receive a lot of donations, and we have an Amazon wishlist, so we think we will be able to get by for fiscal year 13 with that book budget.
Okay, well, I will get with Mr. Reynolds. I might be able to use some of my discretionary funds toward that. Of course, that would be a drop in the bucket compared to what you need, but I mean, some money is better than no money.
Absolutely.
And I haven't spent any of that, and so I will get with Mr. Reynolds, and if Mr. Reynolds is agreeable, and we can talk about using that money for that purpose.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Ms. Kandig, I noticed you want to be recognized, but what I intended was, is that we would get through our agenda items here and then just open it up to the public to talk about any, anything you, you want. Sure. So going to move on to the Westside Library, move to Legion Field.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I have a timeline, you know, that I can go through if the council desires. You know, essentially
I think it's important that we go through that timeline, yes.
Yes, sir, will do. Obviously, as, as you pointed out earlier, Mr. President, this is, this is a planning process that happened many, many moons ago. They began many, many moons ago. And, but essentially, as we look at where we are in, in, in the, what I will call the final phases of the timeline for this particular project, in, after the mayor came on board, he looked at the ability to, to not only put a recreation center, a community center in this particular area, but also to provide a world but also to provide a world-class library in the neighborhood as well. And so that began the planning process when the mayor came on board. Essentially, in June of 2011, both the Library Board and the City Council approved the concept. And at that time, the City Council approved $3 million in PFP funds for the project.
And what date was that?
June 23, actually, for City Council action. And it was the June 2011 Library Board meeting. And I do not recall what the date of that was, sir, but I can certainly-
June 23, 2011.
For City Council action, correct. I will say that the Library Board did have some concerns, both the crossing of Cervantes Street and also that the building itself would no longer be located on a major thoroughfare. Those were the concerns of the Library Board. But they ultimately looked at it and signed off on the project. Recognizing that there were concerns in the community, we actually held two different hearings on the project with the community and actually made changes to the building layout based upon that input from the community. In August of 2011, city staff issued the RFQ for design services. On February 6 of 2012, City Council approved a contract with DAG Architects for the design services. And as I said, it was designed to be a, to have a library included in this building. That was part, that's integral to the design. On November 15 of 2012, City Council will be requested to approve the construction cost for this particular building, which is at our next council meeting.
Could you back up to the date before that, when we signed?
February 6.
Okay, 2012, okay, thank you.
Correct. Construction is slated to start on January 7 of 2013. And construction would tentatively be complete on February 28 of 2014.
And how much of a penalty would there be if we had to start all over with this?
Well, sir, it's really not a penalty. It's essentially redesigning the facility.
I consider that a penalty.
You know, and so, you know, that's several hundred thousand dollars to redesign probably, as well as the, you know, $250,000 or so that-
You've already spent.
Went into the initial design, so.
Yes, just a quick question on that. Let's just say that we left the design alone, and we just left the library part just a shell, just a space, just a room, store, whatever it is. Where does that leave us? I'm just curious.
Well, that leaves you with a large hole in your building.
Sure, yeah.
And, you know, you have the West Side Library, then, in the current strip mall that's located in.
Okay, but there would be no redesign? It would be, I'm just trying to get some information from my-
If-
There'd be no redesign, so there'd be no architectural fees to redesign the building? We would just have an empty space room that would be there?
It could be used.
This body could certainly determine that.
Right, I'm just, okay, thank you.
Dr. Pratt.
I'm going to tag on, though. I would, I was believing, and I think this isn't totally incorrect, that we don't have money to pay for the facility for the West Side Library. I mean, because we've been paying rent on this building.
Correct.
And so, you know, part of the goal of this is now we've spent this money on our own building that regular people would have a mortgage for. But, you know, we, I mean, in some sense, we have some costs in that building. And so now we're going to not be paying rent, which will help us make the library a better resource. So we wouldn't be able-
And that's, you're exactly right, and it's not a trade-off. But the other point is, is that we currently have not programmed in the running of this new facility, which is larger than the current facility.
Sure.
So, you know, there will be some attendant costs to that.
Right, but we will be losing the rent payment.
Yep, that's correct.
So it would be, I'm under the impression that even if we had it as an empty shell, the cost of maintaining the other one as a separate facility would be a lot higher than moving into the new facility.
Ms. Myers.
I think Councilwoman Wu-
You know, I didn't.
Oh, you didn't?
No, I did, I put it up.
Oh.
I did. I think we did at the same time.
Okay, okay. Now, we, go ahead.
Thanks. I do not endorse stopping the train and the momentum and the expectation on the part of that neighborhood and the community, particularly the youth that would be, I think, the victims of rethinking this, redesigning it, or the casualties. They're expecting it. And even if we continue, as you pointed out, we've got a delivery date of, anticipated delivery date of end of February 2014. But, you know, that conversation certainly is about public input and how they were invited to the table. And as I understand, we're actively engaged in the programming, is something that I just don't think we can discount. I've reached out, asked some questions to people that I consider authoritative in that they are hands-on the ground. They're involved in that community. And it's my understanding that they do not feel that the youth sports program, programming, will be compromised by having the hybrid, that being the resource center, the library component, coexisting with that facility. At one time, I was not confident that was true, but I've been educated in light. Before I go to you, on that combination of the things, I was amazed on a trip that Dr. Pratt and I took a couple of years ago to St. Louis. Mr. Spencer had a chance to go up there more recently than us in a very, very distressed neighborhood. Don't want to really use the term Beirut. That has not been a good word around here lately, but but it was a community center, it was an elementary school, it was a library, it was a gym. You know, it was like, and these were different governing bodies coming together to make this work, which made it even more complicated. At least we've got one body here, you know, deciding on this. And one part of it actually enhanced the other. People that came there to the library saw the opportunity for a gymnasium as well. And the most interesting part about it was having the elementary school there. Because my first thought went up to me was the security of the kids. But they had some firewalls there that kept the kids safe. But it was just very, very interesting, the dynamic. And it became a focal point for that community. And so, anyway, we, Ms. Myers.
Yes. Well, I'm still looking at a solution here. There are a number of things that we can do. I think it is a great tragedy that this library is being moved from the West Side. And I have said that over and over. I think I was a long, no vote on this council regarding moving that library. I have looked very closely at how the neighborhoods on Cervantes Street would have access to Legion Field, and it is not easy. Number one, you have a street traffic getting across the street problem. You have sidewalks that are broken up, disappear, people have to walk in the streets. I've looked at every path of travel from the West Side Library to Legion Field. And one thing I would like to know, and I have not gotten the answer, how much are we paying to operate the West Side Library? I think Ms. Wu has that right on top of her head. She indicates she does.
Are you talking about the rent or the?
The whole thing, the rent to operate that library. What's the budget for it?
The proposed budget for 13 was $365,000. Last year, it's $349,000.
Okay. So this, the library, the Legion Field facility will start construction in January. And how long will it take to complete it?
It's about a year, ma'am.
A year?
Yeah.
So is it possible that we have some time to work on looking at a solution to maybe keeping the library, the West Side Library, open? I mean, we don't have to just take it off the table if we're looking at another year, at least keeping something over there. So we know we have a little bit of time. Now, one of the things, if it's inevitable that that library is going to close, I think that we need to look at working with the county. Larry Newsom is an excellent person to work with. He's an expert in transportation. I don't know who has jurisdiction over Cervantes Street, but I would love to see a traffic light put there at one of those streets that provides access to Legion Fields. So I think we should be looking at improvements to Cervantes Street, working with the county. If the county, in fact, has jurisdiction over Cervantes Street, it may be a state road. I don't know. I see Mr. Garza is here, he might know. Okay, then that would require working with perhaps the county-
FDOT.
Huh?
FDOT.
FDOT, to try to get enhanced crossing facilities there, a light with access aisles going across the street. Also, the city should improve every sidewalk from wherever we can get a traffic light down to Legion Fields, from Cervantes to Legion Fields. Those sidewalks need to be repaired, curb coats need to be put in, so that those people, many of them who live in the housing project, do not own cars, they're going to be on foot. I think we need to look at a plan to get people from, across Cervantes Street to the other side of the street and to the library. We might also think of maybe at least having a bookmobile going over there to that community. But I don't think that we should just abandon those people over there. I think that we need to do something, even if we can't keep the library open there. Let's at least make it possible for people to get there. So that's what I would like to put on the table. Not going to make a motion, but just going to leave it to staff and ask maybe staff to take a look. We've got some time, so that's what I'm proposing.
And thank you, Councilwoman Myers, because those are important issues. And I will remind you that the mayor believes in sidewalks, as you well know, as he provided over $300,000 for improved ADA access in last year's budget specifically for those issues. I will tell you that those are certainly things that staff can take a look at. We, you know, the, working with FDOT, as you know, this administration has a great relationship with FDOT and has done a lot to, whether it's the beautifying of Bayfront Parkway or other areas, have been able to bring funding in that we would not normally have because of the personal relationships that the mayor has worked to achieve in that organization. So we, I feel relatively confident that we can work and be successful on those issues for you.
Okay, well, at the very minimal, I think we need to do that, to address those issues. And I think, I feel hopeful, based on what you've just said, that staff can bring something to council to give us at least a level of comfort that people will be able to get to the library safely.
Is that it, Ms. Myers?
Yes, sir.
Okay, before I go to Dr. Pratt and then Mr. Johnson, I just want to express my gratitude to Ms. Myers, because it seemed like to me, and it may have been a misunderstanding of mine, that it was an either-or issue. And my concern was is that we were very far down the path towards building this community center and library. And that after, and Mr. Reynolds updated this from the time the mayor came on board. But this has been going, this argument's been going on for years, just an unprecedented number of meetings. And then at that 11th and a half hour, he has to have somebody come and ask us to put the brakes on it. And the ample, ample public input on this, and even now at the 11th and a half hour, we're allowing the public, but to separate those two issues, one from the other. I think the project at Legion Field is a great one. I think it's worthy of being funded. And certainly, access to that with a stoplight and sidewalks or the van, the shuttle bus going down there are all great things. But as far as the present West Side Library there on Cervantes, I think that would be a separate issue that I would encourage you with the next council to pursue. But not hold this up when we've got an award for bid I'm coming to us next Tuesday. Dr. Pratt.
Thank you, Mr. President. Touching a little bit on the street issue, that, you know, that's one of the things we're also going to be looking at with the Complete Streets Committee. And if there are any of the people who feel strongly about this particular issue, I encourage them to do the survey because we haven't really been hearing from the West Side. And having community support helps convince FDOT to do something out of the ordinary. So I encourage any who are pushing hard because of the location. If people haven't figured this out about me, I like information when I make statements. One of the things that frustrated me when this came up previously was we heard from the citizens, and based on what they were saying, it sounded like we nixed the library in the community center, there was no room, blah, blah, blah. And I know that that had been something that was a concern as the public meetings went on, that at the first meetings, the library wasn't even represented. And so I was hoping that, I assume there are plans at this point for the building, I don't know if you brought them, but I was hoping we could have those at some point. And, but the information about how much space is going to be for the library versus what's the West Side Library currently? And I know that one of the important parts of the West Side Library is the computer usage. And I didn't know if there was going to be a separate computer space in this new building. So those were a couple of questions, I have a few more comments.
Yeah, and it's a significant increase in square footage. Currently, there's 3,000 square foot in the West Side Library, this will be 4,500 square foot. And there will be increased computer area as well. So it is, by all respects, it is a nicer building that will have more material and new computers. And, you know, it was designed to be a world-class facility.
And are the computers in those, it's going to be a 4,500 square foot room and computers will be part of it? Or are they a separate space? I was just curious. I'm just curious.
I can certainly get all that, I can get all the layout and everything for you.
That would be nice to see.
Sure.
And then I just wanted to touch a little bit on the computer aspect and Councilwoman Myers' statement that we have a lot of time. We really don't. The administration is starting their budget process, like they started October 1st, is that pretty much when it starts? And we're, they're looking hard at what the next year's budget's going to be, and if we need to be operating both the West Side Building and the Legion Field Building, that has to be budgeted for starting now. So it's not, we don't have all of the time in the world. But one thing that occurred to me in thinking about it is, you know, the West Side Library is on one side and Fricker Center's on the other side, and there might be a way, I would hope to think about, how can we make Fricker Center be a resource for that region a little bit? I know they have a nice computer lab, you know, could we have a system where, you know, people sign into the computer lab like they do at the libraries, just to be able to serve some of the need of the north of Cervantes? And so I hope that that can be discussed. You know, if the direction we're going is the combined community library building, Fricker Center could be a small effort there as well, so.
And we actually looked at Fricker as we were trying to come up with solutions. The way Fricker is designed, there really wasn't any room for any type of a library space, and then also understanding that, once again, we don't have the money to run the spaces we currently have. And so, but Fricker was certainly looked at. Now, I will say that, you know, there's always the opportunity for taking a look at the computer assets in Fricker, or some other things that aren't specifically dealing with the lending of books, per se. You know, we were more than happy to take a look at, even if it is a stop for the bookmobile or however we could work that. But recognize, once again, and I keep reminding everyone of this, we don't have the money to run what we have now. And that's ultimately always going to be the problem.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, thank you very much, I appreciate it. You know, I hear that construction's supposed to start in January 2013. I appreciate this gentleman out in the audience that came and spoke about not moving the library, and I appreciate that. We also talked about dates that public input was welcome months and months and months ago, would have liked to have heard from these folks at that time. You know, but even with that said, sometimes we don't get everything we want. I know when I came on council, there was discussion about the downtown library and that construction, and I actually felt that the library should be moved two blocks east on Palafoc Street. I lost that argument. I lost that argument, and we just keep on trucking and moving down the road. But the way I see this is, this train's left the station. I'm going to tack on with Councilman Spencer talked about, you know, there's expectations in the West Side. I've talked to folks on the West Side, I understand the concerns about crossing the road. Another issue that faced me when I first came on this council was the discussion about the new elementary school on Pace Boulevard. And one of the things that really bothered me was elementary children crossing Pace Boulevard, going to the new elementary school there. And I could go on and on about that, but I'm going to try to do the short version today, because I know we all have a lot of things to do a little bit later, but, you know, that was another one that I lost. But there was an elementary school built right on a busy, 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 busy road, Pace Boulevard that being, and I had concerns about how these kids would cross that road, but somehow they've worked through that. But, you know, this train's left the station. We're talking about breaking ground in two months. There's expectations on the West Side of town for this to happen. We all don't get everything we want. I know that I haven't on this council, my four years on this council, I haven't got, I've lost some things I thought were good ideas and reasons, I had reasons why I thought that they should happen, whether it was move the downtown library two blocks to make it a centerpiece of downtown, or it was not to build an elementary school on a busy highway. So sometimes it's just a give and take down here, but kind of all over the board. But right now, if I had to vote on this thing, I say leave it at is, let's move forward. We're talking about breaking ground in 60 days, 13 months they're out, we're going to have a new facility there that we all can embrace and be a showpiece for the West Side of town, and the West Side definitely needs something, they need this. And so I just can't see stopping this train. I appreciate the gentleman, I believe he's a pastor, that doesn't want it. I understand your concerns, sir, I wish we'd have heard from you months ago, maybe we did, and I don't recall, and if that's the case, I do apologize for that. But I'm just ready to get this thing moving, I'm ready to break ground, and my vote is to leave as is. I've tried to go through some other things that have happened in the history since I've been on this council, and I say let's, don't stop this train, let's move going. With that said, two other things. Mr. Reynolds, could you, you know, we could talk about funding, and I'm just curious, what type of money do the city residents, what type of tax dollars do we transfer to the county? Do you have a recollection of that exactly? Say you're a city resident, you're paying city and county taxes, okay, what tax amount do we transfer, city residents transfer to the county? And what do we get in return for that? I'm just curious, I'm trying to get this in my head, and maybe if you could walk me through that, I'd appreciate that.
Well, I can tell you that our ad valorem transfer is about nineteen point two, six, three million dollars.
Nineteen two million dollars is transferred from city residents to the county government?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Nineteen two, okay, I'm sorry, continue, I just wanted to write that down.
You know, I'm not an expert of county services in the area, I have been a county administrator before, but generally, the county would have services such as Sheriff's Department, you know, they're going to have.
Well, we're serviced by the city police department, the city limits, correct?
Correct.
Okay, right.
The, they will also have some structure of either a volunteer or professional firefighters.
We have a professional city fire department, though, also, that services.
Mr. Johnson, just to be clear.
That's right.
No, you're trying to get out of him, what do we get from the county that the city doesn't always already pay for and provide for itself?
Okay, my bad, I'm sorry, too much coffee this morning.
I can certainly make an inquiry of the county, sir, and we can find out what, you know.
Well, I know that they, I know that we got a million dollars for Rogers Scott Tennis Facility a few years ago, I know that we had resurfacing on 12th Avenue. I'm not sure what that, I'm not sure that's nowhere near nineteen point two million dollars a year, I'm just trying to figure out what we get as city residents, because I'm paying city and county taxes, what do I get as a city resident in return for that?
Amy Lavoy is sitting right there, she can answer that.
Okay, because I want to get the understanding, and I have that question asked to me often by constituents, and I've.
I have a list of everything, two pages, but Amy Lavoy.
And this is off the top of my head, so you'll have to forgive me.
How are you doing, Ms. Lavoy?
How you doing, Mr. Johnson?
I'm good.
You can start with the clerk of the circuit court, the tax collector, the property appraiser, the jail, court security, all mandates of the court system, the medical examiner, the health department, our responsibility towards Medicaid, you can get our responsibility towards the juvenile, the Department of Juvenile Justice, animal control, ECAT, you get road prison, you get, well, no, you must have been. So you get pre-trial programs, you get the pre-trial services, you get community corrections programs, you get the Board of County Commissioners, because every city resident is responsible for a Board of County Commissioners. I will remind you of that nineteen point two, three, something comes back to you in the form of the CRA that the county supports. You get all of the facilities for the county, so there's a long list, and that's just off the top of my head, so.
Ms. Lavoy, if I could just chime in on that, if you take all those that you listed, and what the total budget for those happens to be, and then you multiply that by seventeen percent, how much money are we subsidizing county operations? Because that's really what we're looking at.
Correct.
We're going to be subsidizing the county.
Correct.
For services we don't get.
Correct, and if you do the proration, and I have done it many times, based on population, and if you do it exclusively on unique services, meaning services that the county does not, that the city does not provide, for example, the clerk, the jail, supervisor of elections, forgot the supervisor of elections, medical examiner, health department, of all of those, if you consider just those unique properties, then the city probably doesn't, then city residents do contribute more than their fair share. However, if you look at shared services.
Okay, I just wanted the press to hear that, the city residents.
If you look at shared services.
Contribute more than their fair share.
Meaning services that county provides to city residents, that the city also provides to their own residents, then it would reverse itself, and the city residents are wound up, sound subsidized by the county.
No, not really, because we're county residents, too.
Well, everybody in the city is everybody in the county.
Yeah, we're county residents, too. Okay, I've got a couple of people on.
I'm done, I'm sorry. And also, I think that it's very, I would like to, I know President Hall has just a few weeks left here in the room, and I would like to acknowledge him for the work that he's done with Tryon Library. You know, when Councilman Hall came on in 2006, the Tryon Library wasn't on Langley Avenue, it was on Ninth and College Boulevard, I believe, and I believe with the assistance of Ms. Hooton and others, with Mr. President Sam Hall leading that charge today is why we have that library on Langley Avenue, and I think he should be recognized for that, President Hall. And I want to thank you for that, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, Ms. Myers, Mr. Spencer, then I'm going to go to the public, okay?
Well, I just wanted to say, I think that we need to stay on topic.
Thank, thank, thank you.
And, I mean, we could argue this county-city funding for a long time, but I want to stay on a more positive note and talk about solutions. But I agree with Mr., with Councilman Johnson, the train has left the station. Unfortunately, some people have been left behind, and what we want to do is to do something for them, to help them get to use, if they're going to lose their library, to use the Legion Field Library. And so, and I think that that's doable for at least accommodating a lot of people, and it has to do with complete streets. Maybe we could even put some bicycle lanes on those streets, and maybe that could be a great complete street project, you know, not just fixing the sidewalks, but a lot of the people over there don't have cars, they ride bicycles, and having a complete street project right there to connect those two communities would, I think, be a great project to help facilitate the use of that Legion Field Library.
Spencer?
Thanks. I want to thank Councilwoman Myers for recognizing that having or continuing any sort of push to keep the Cervantes Street storefront as the exclusive West Side location would, in fact, slow this process down. I appreciate her recognizing the opportunity for us to all be supportive in evaluating the need to create safer transportation routes, and I'm publicly committing my advocacy on that issue. And I also want to remind the council members that will remain here, it's been, I've been so encouraged by the fact that the elected council members that have not yet been sworn in have been attending so many of these meetings, not at all mandatory, but what that provides is their smooth transition in involvement in some of these issues. They are not, we are not going to have to bring them up to speed, and I just want to say thank you to them for being part of this learning process.
Okay, thank you. And I'm going to open up to the public now. First is Mr. Rod Kendig, and then Mr. Councilmember-elect Gerald Wingate. Welcome, Mr. Kendig.
Thank you, sir, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, Mayor Hayward, Mr. Reynolds. I appear in front of you, my address is 1088 Black Walnut Trail, Pensacola, Florida 32514. I want to take just a couple of moments to speak to you as a local government historian, if you will, and as one who's been privileged to be appointed to the Blue Ribbon Task Force on the library system. What I heard today takes me back 30 years ago, when the original inter-local agreement on the library system was put in place. At that time, the majority of users were the residents of the city. The unincorporated area users were, I think it was around 30 or 35 percent. We know what's happened over the last 30 years. To hear what the mayor, and Mr. Reynolds, and Mr. Valentino, and Mr. Newsom took on on Monday was very exciting to see, after 30 years, we're finally catching up to 2012, and have continued, have been continuing to live basically on the outlines of the 1980 agreement. It was at the same time that they also, the city and the county, came together on the mass transit funding, both of them, as you know, user-based. Coincidentally, those were also byproducts of the dual taxation lawsuit that was underway at that time, and my future employer, the city, lost that, the county won it. But that's what set up the MSTU that encompassed the Sheriff's Road Patrol, as Amy well knows, and the road department. It was a clear delineation in terms of those issues, but the user base for the library and the transit system were an outgrowth of that. Also, during that time, we worked with then Pensacola Junior College to put together a Tryon Branch Library at the location that now the Genealogy Library was. The joy for all of us of that was, it also allowed the Pensacola Junior College, now State College, to take College Boulevard, turn it over to them, and allow them to see what you see there now. So there is, you know, a very positive history of what difference the Tryon Branch Library made then, and what difference it is making now. But to see that we are finally catching up and pursuing a contemporizing of the inter-local agreement on the funding of the library is something I didn't think I'd live to see. The second thing I wanted to ask is that I would certainly hope that the mayor, and Mr. Reynolds, and Mr. Valentino, and Mr. Tuohat, Newsom, will work with the Blue Ribbon Task Force in terms of the long-term solution, so that there is an integration of the activities of both of those groups, and they reinforce one another, as opposed to going down two separate tracks and using a lot of energy and perhaps duplicating, I think that would be very helpful. And then a final comment I would make, and that is, it's been my personal experience on the private sector side, that the library is a very significant part of a community's economic development, and I certainly hope when we look at the updating of the long-range plan, that we include economic development as one of the factors that need to be considered in terms of what will bring a business here and what will have them stay here, which is a library that's alive and vibrant and supports the children, as well as the families of those that we want to bring here. Because a fractured library system does not help in terms of job site locators and seeing a fragmented system. But I thank you, Mr. President, and I particularly thank you, Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Mayor, for seeing, doing something I didn't think would happen in my lifetime, and that's a personal observation, but thank you, sir.
And thank you, Mr. Kendig. Councilmember-elect Gerald Wingate.
Sam, I was hoping that I would hear some of the opinions of some of the other people before I got up here to talk.
Well, you kept raising your hand.
Yes, because we've been sitting out here an hour and a half, and y'all are still going on and on with the same things.
Well, welcome, okay, just, so, get used to that.
There's a presidency position.
One of the things I see here is a lack of representation for the people in that district. I mean, the councilman that represents that district is not here, and I think that if you consider that section of town over there, you've got people that don't have cars, they have to walk to go where they need to go. Would you send your kid down to the library if you lived over here? Or do you, would you send your kid to walk into a library now, from where you live? Yeah, Mr. Johnson?
No, I would not.
Okay. The people are not being represented. Okay. The people are not being represented. You have low-income areas up in that.
But, Mr. Gerald, we don't have a library in District Four. I mean, Mr. Wingate, I'm sorry. Mr. Wingate, we don't have a library in District Four.
No, I'm not talking about District Four. I'm talking about you personally. Would you, would you send your kids that distance, walking from here down to the field, in the afternoon, or at night, or whatever?
Well, like I said earlier, I wouldn't be comfortable having my child go to this elementary school on Pace Boulevard and have to cross that road either.
Yeah.
So I made that point earlier.
Yeah. Okay, we've got a library that's there, and it's, people can walk to that library. It's right there in their communities. It's not only the place there on Servanty's. There are other areas in there that people would even have to walk further distances to get to a library. And I'm not on the board today, but if I were sitting there and we were all here together, I would really be putting on a strong defense of not moving that. You know, people put together plans all the time, and a lot of times, they don't get carried out. They are reshaped, revamped, to come up with a better solution. The train has left the station, but you're not on the train. It's other people that are affected that have, that are having to do this. You know, we've got a plan, and you want to put it down there, but you've got people that's probably going to have to walk a half a mile or three-quarters a mile to get to the library down here, to get the services that they need. And I kind of agree with Sherri Myers. She would probably be one of my opposition members if I were sitting over here right now. But we need to be looking out for what's best for the people and the communities, and trying to serve the communities. Escambia County is 46 in education here, and we're rated as D-plus schools. So we need to be making educational opportunities available for people where they don't have to go out of the way to try to get to it. We're supposed to be serving all of the community and making sure that everybody gets what they need. And what I see you talking about today is not fulfilling that need. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Walter Wallace and Mr. Charles Bear. Okay, Ms. Myers.
I just wanted to respond to Mr. Wingate. And congratulations, Mr. Wingate. I'm looking forward to working with you. Unfortunately, when this issue came up for vote last year, no one came to city council and spoke up against the vote that was on the table. I believe I was the lone vote against moving that library. And people only started coming forward and speaking up recently. I think had people come there and they had numerous opportunities to, maybe they didn't know that we had a committee of the whole and two city council meetings, if they could have weighed in at those meetings. Maybe council would have voted differently or reconsidered the plan, but that didn't happen, and now we're this far along. But we cannot just abandon the people over there. We've got to do something to get some resources for them, either to get to Legion Field. And you're right. I mean, parents of small children are not going to allow their children to walk, even if we do have, you know, a light there and good sidewalks and so forth. So we're going to have to come up with some way to address that situation over there. And Mr. Reynolds has already indicated that staff is going to be looking into that, and he's heard enough from city council, our concerns. And so I'm looking forward to seeing what staff comes up with. And I believe the mayor's committed to it, too. And I see him back there, and he's saying, yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
What I'm going to ask the public to do, Mr. Wallace, so I can just try to be fair to everybody and get you in the order that you'd like to speak, is after Mr. Wallace, if I could get Mr. Bear to line up behind him, and then just kind of form a line down the center there. Mr. Wallace.
Okay, thank you for this morning. But I want to just, Councilman Bryant, you were talking about the victim. The victim is, in this case, of people in Brownville, Evanwood, Bell's Head. These areas are all in the county. If you look at the library system, and I guess I'm passionate about it because as a kid, standing on M Street, I'm now 18 years, eight years old. I can walk on my bicycle. I'll go on my bicycle when we used to go to the library, Addis William Library on Gonzales E. But now you look at the situation, now you've got these people in Brownville, Evanwood, Shantytown, Bell's Head, these areas. And people got to understand the library system. If you stayed in Warrenton, you want to go to South, if you ever been to the Southwest Library, you've got a little distance to go. And you look at every library system, the library is, on average, eight to 10 miles from an individual house. Now, as you said, the train left the station. I agree there, but the train might have left the station, but why, five years or six years down the road, we can bring that train back and put funding to restore a library on the West Side? You have a piece of property in the city, almost three, four acres, sit right on J and K Street, between J and Kate, and Lord, and Bernard, just half of it's owned by the city, half of it's owned by the housing authority that's been sitting there for years. It's not being used. But why in the future, five years or eight years ago, we can, from here, that we can look at putting funding to put a library system up in that area, for that access for those people? And I look at the people in Brownville, and Evanwood, Bell's Head, all these places, that's a long ways to go. And to me, we're getting, Pensacola will have a reputation like to me, we got for two high schools, West Florida and Pan Forest, two blocks of each other. What other city and county are you going to go to and have a high school, two high schools within two blocks? Now we're going to end up with two libraries within eight blocks of each other. But down the future, I guarantee you, in the way Mr. Reynolds was talking about, how redoing the library board, refunding the library, how we fund the library, down four or five, three or four, five years down the road, we can start planning to build a standalone library on the West Side.
Thank you. Councilmember-Elect Bear, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, fellow council members, Mayor Hayward, Councilmember-Elect Mr. Wingate. I'm come from a library family. I'll just tell you that right now. My mother was president of Friends of Library up in Northern Virginia for a very big library system. My first job, it was unpaid, it was a volunteer job, was at a mini-library, which is similar to what West Side is. And it was a much smaller, pared-down version, had volumes there. You could check out, at the time, didn't have computers, because computers weren't really big, way to computer to do the system, but still had the card catalog and everything. Libraries have changed over the years, and now we have a dependence from the community on the other aspects of the library, computers, access to technology. And I think that is a good role for libraries to take. Having said that, the issue has been, over the past few years, and quite a few years actually, is what can we do with the money we have available? I think the MSTU offers a, an excellent way to fund the library system, a dedicated source of funding that you can plan around. You know, obviously, property taxes are not 100% stable, because we have issues like hurricanes, and we have downturns in the economy. But like Alachua County, which I was reading, their mileage rate's about 1.3 something that they use to fund their library system. It gives a dedicated source of funding to be able to plan. Right now, we don't have that. It's like, what can we afford? Can we afford a library at West Side and one at Legion Field? Well, we don't really look at what the needs are. We're looking at, let's consolidate everything into this one building. And while I think it's great to use facilities for multi-use, there are also issues to be concerned with, like parking, access to the facility. The plans I saw for that building at Legion Field don't include a lot of additional parking. We're not good in this city at providing parking. Tryon Branch Library, frequently, it's hard to find a parking spot there. So I look at multi-use facilities as great, because you can co-locate things, you know, the heating and air and all that stuff. You can consolidate under one roof. However, the needs of the community have to dictate what we do and where we locate things. And what I have found with libraries is, once you put one somewhere, people become accustomed to going there, and they actually develop a type of dependency, a good dependency, unlike a lot of dependencies we have in our society, on that particular facility. I have walked the streets on the West Side of town, south and north of Servanty's, twice. Once when I ran for mayor, and once when I ran for council. Those streets are not the best streets to be sending your young children. No street in Pensacola, you should send your child by themselves five blocks to walk. But in particular, when I rode with the police overnight, when I did a ride-along, we spent a lot of time on the West Side over in those streets. There's a lot of crime that takes place over there. We've seen some of that recently. There's not a huge police presence over there unless there is crime going on. And so I think to send kids across Servanty's, first of all, is terrible, because it's a really busy street, and I think we've had some people killed there. It's kind of like Highway 98 on Gulf Breeze. It's one of those places where people, you know, they don't pay attention. Sometimes they cross where they shouldn't, and so it's a high-hazard area. My kids go to AK Suter. It's right next to Servanty's, which is also a high-traffic area. I've not seen many kids cross the street there. But it's also one of those streets that's pretty dangerous. Luckily, we don't live across, and we don't send our kids to walk. I wouldn't dare let my kids walk four blocks, two blocks to school. I mean, with the risks we have right now, I think it's bad enough to have them just play out in the front yard. So I think the MSTU's a step in the right direction. I think we need to look more carefully at what the needs, what the usage is at West Side, and whether, you know, with the MSTU in the future, we can look at planning to keep something there, because we have to have access to a library there. And the issue of people not coming to the meetings here, I'm sorry, but some of the meetings have gone so long here that I think citizens have just lost interest in even watching them on TV. So I think if we want to get citizen input, we have to do more of what the mayor's been doing. And that's go out there and actually listen to citizens in their place of residence, or in somewhere close, you know. I've been with the police when we've been around on the West Side and gotten out and walked. And so you could have some interface with citizens. And really, if you want to gain the trust of citizens, you need to get out there and be with them, and not sit down here and counsel and just hope that they show up. So I'm hopeful that in the future, if we look at what the true needs of the community are, and where we should place things like libraries, that we'll do more of that as a council. And I am encouraged by the fact that Mr. Wingate spoke today, and we will have a new council, and we will work on issues of having access for people to have their voices heard, not just down here. Thank you.
I just had a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Are you suggesting, then, that we not do the award bid next week?
I am not saying that. I think that the project, the Legion Field project, is one that we are, you know, we're moving forward on, and I think it's going to be great for that community. However, I don't think it has to be an either-or thing in the library.
Okay.
I think we need to look at the budget, look at what we can afford. And I think that a dedicated source of funding is going to help us with that, because we can actually plan. But no, I'm not saying we need to derail the current process for Legion Field.
Okay, all right, thank you. Ms. Myers.
Yes, I wanted to thank Mr. Bear for coming down. And I agree with what you and Mr. Wingate both have said regarding the West Side. I'm glad to know that we're going to have two additional new council members who are not willing to give up on the West Side library, or at least having resources over there. As far as the people coming down here to talk to city council, I just want to point out that before I came on city council, that the council met at 7:00. And we had a citizen who came down here regularly, who used a wheelchair. He lives, lived on Servanty's there at Inglewood, just a block from the West Side Library. A lot of those people at Inglewood use that library. You're talking about elderly people, people with disabilities. And of course, they're obviously going to have a hard time getting to Legion Field. But that gentleman came down here, and this is the power of the citizens. This council listens to the citizens. He came down here, and he said he had a difficult time coming to our meetings and speaking at public forum, because we started at 7:00, and he would have to travel in his motorized wheelchair from Inglewood down here. That's how committed he was. But based on his coming to city council, we changed our meeting time to 5:30 in the afternoon. We put public forum at 5:30, before we even start our business. So that allowed him and other citizens who are dependent on public transportation or other forms of transportation to get here before dark, have public forum. And then they also have an opportunity to speak to any agenda item, which the West Florida Library was an agenda item. So they had that opportunity. Then they have another opportunity at public forum afterwards. But I believe that we have done an extraordinary job of providing a council format that allows the citizens to have a lot of input and not have to wait. In fact, I really want to commend our president at the last city council meeting for adjusting that long, laborious agenda we had. And he actually changed the agenda order to allow people to speak on the library issue, because he could see that people were leaving, because they could not, for whatever reason, stay there. That was really a fantastic thing that you did. But I just want to make you aware that, in my opinion, you know, that we've done a lot to improve the opportunities for citizens' participation. Maybe we need more, and I'm looking forward to your ideas when you are on city council.
And I do, too. I just encourage you that when you get a council, do whatever you can do to make the meetings run more efficiently.
We'll work on that.
And I will, I'm going to be your biggest cheerleader out there, and trying to accomplish... Just a moment, sir. I see, I see. And, but, but Ms. Myers is absolutely right. Not only do we have the committee of the whole meetings, but sometimes we have special meetings. The board has their meetings on the input. And when this is on a city council item, you do get an opportunity to speak to it three different times.
Right.
Yes, two open forums, and on the issue itself. And so I think it's unprecedented in Florida, you know, to have that much opportunity for citizen input. So anyway, I think, Mr. Bear. Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. President. And I'm going to just recall what Ms. Myers said a minute ago, that we must stay on topic. And the topic's libraries today. So I'm going to remind everyone, and I second what Ms. Myers said a little while ago, that we must remain, remain on topic. But with that said, and I apologize to Mr. Wingate for calling the wrong name. I apologize. But with that said, and we're talking about libraries here, if we have a library on the South Side of Servanty's, does that mean that the children that live on the North Side of Servanty's have to cross Servanty's? And if we have a library vice versa, is, I mean, they're, they're going, you know, I'm not being insensitive of children. Obviously, I made the point about the school on Pace Boulevard, and I don't want anyone to leave here thinking that I'm not insensitive, that I'm insensitive to children crossing the road. But whatever side of the road it's on, somebody's going to have to cross, cross a road there. So I just, I'd like to make that point. I also would like to remind us, Ms. Myers said that we must stay on topic. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bear.
Thank you.
Welcome, sir.
Yes, my name is Bud Clay. Couple of questions. One is, what is the acronym, the M something, something, something you're talking about, funding this, the funding, the new funding?
Oh, MSTU.
Yes.
Municipal Services Tax Unit.
Okay, and...
Well, the county traditionally provides stuff like county roads, and dirt roads, and stuff like that, in the sheriff's department. And there's, sometimes there's ideas of what's considered more of a municipal service than a rural county service. And they can, there's a MSTU and an MSBU. I don't really understand the distinction between the two, because they both result in a tax. And, but one has to do with benefit, and one is a taxing unit. But that would, it would be an additional tax on people in the county to pay for that library, if it passes.
Okay. One more, one more question. And I think Bill started his comments with it, and this is the first meeting I've been to, so I'm not familiar with the West Side and all this other stuff you've been talking about. But how can, how can you spend $3 million on something new, and you're cutting back on what we've got right now? And, you know, as a citizen, I don't keep up with all of what you're doing, but I ride down to the new library, and it's beautiful. And people are being laid off, and you can't get in it. And from a citizen's point of view, we see this new stuff, no new books. stuff. No new books, not enough people there. It's closed. I mean, it, it, what kind of signal is this? That you're building something new and yet you can't maintain what you have now? Um, that's the only comment I have. And I'd be interested to know. I sure can't run my house that way. You know, I, if I owe something to put a new roof on, I can't go buy a new car. So I don't, I don't understand this. It may be coming out of different pockets, but from, from this standpoint, it, I look at the city and the county and I see you all as one. And to see something new like this and yet what, it's not being funded and the people are, are disappearing, it's, um, it's frustrating and confusing.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. President, if I may, just a, just a clarification. And I certainly don't want to speak for the county, but in our discussions on Monday, the issue in regards to the MSTU is that then we would offset that with our current, uh, uh, millage. So
Sure.
Whatever that is, we would then decrease. Uh, and that was, so there, the, the, the net effect to the citizenry would be no increase in taxes.
Okay. I got you. So it...
Now, again, I, I, that was the topic of the discussion. I certainly don't want to speak for the county in that regards, obviously, but that, that was the concept that we are working from.
So what, what, what the county could do is either elect to up its, but it would be two different actions. If they did want to, um, compensate, they could raise the millage rate and then have that dedicated to the MSTU. Or they could keep the millage rate the same and just have a certain portion of it dedicated to the library.
The, that's correct.
Okay.
The, the net effect was to have no increase.
Okay, that would be the net effect. Okay, great.
Correct. No, no new taxes, no increase in taxes.
Okay. I, I appreciate you clarifying that. Yes, sir.
Excuse me. Um, good morning, council. Um, my name is Jerry Hunter Jr. and I live at 1822 St. Catherine's Avenue.
That's Jerry Long?
Sir.
Jerry Long?
Hunter.
Hunter.
H-U-N-T-E-R. At present, um, five, maybe six years ago, we, um, went to my church and, um, family, went to the West Side Branch Library and started, um, the Friends of the West Side Branch Library. And, um, at any time the staff needs funding for food or resources, um, they call us and we go and we provide our own resources. We raise our own money for the kind of, um, learning and educational processes that those families and individuals want because we live there and we know the culture. So we provide what they want. And a little caveat about, caveat about that, uh, we were told that, uh, um, there was a call for support of that branch library from the general community and nobody came. Um, I'm a small, I represent a small Southern Baptist, uh, church here in Pensacola and about 25 members. And we use our own money to support learning, um, in the community. Um, when we heard about the meetings, it was in the late summer. And we're there all the time, anytime they call us. So the train had left, but we knew nothing about it. Nobody, I'm sure there was some kind of advertisement, but not like today where when you go into that community, uh, now everybody, there's a buzz about because we know, we didn't know. Had I known, there would have been a group down here. So we didn't know. And so, um, there's an after the fact because now we know. So what took place to keep us from knowing, I don't know. But I, I just found out that there's a survey for some input about roads and streets and that kind of thing. And, um, the question is, is that knowledge made available to that community and do they have the access to get online to do the survey? And to get the input from those that live there. Now, I don't live in the Marcus Point Community, so I have nothing to do with, um, even with the Tryon Branch out there off of Langley. Uh, those community people, I'm sure gave input, input, even on the beach, things that happened there. I'm sure those families, excuse me, uh, know about it and they give their input. And I'm sure there's a lot of things that are done to make sure that they know. So, um, we didn't know that, that, that was going to take place. Community organizations, uh, and I don't represent any of them, uh, only the Friends of the West Side Branch Library, the West Florida Chamber of Commerce and Good Works Baptist Church. But, um, there's the truthful youth, Reverend Powell. I mean, there are hundreds, even thousands of kids that he works with. And I don't see him down there. And I don't know if there was any, uh, effort to get him involved. Uh, there's Pacara, Reverend, uh, Mr. Leroy Williams. And, um, Milk and Honey that serves over at the, uh, Fricker Center. And there are other urban principals and teachers who know about the learning curve and what can be done to help, um, you know, influence learning in the urban area. So I, I didn't hear when, um, Megan mentioned, Ms. Megan mentioned about groups that are involved. And, and we're constantly doing stuff to try to increase learning and promote education in our community. And, uh, years ago, when I ran for state representative, I went to the Bush administration here, uh, in Florida. And I said, "Look, what can you guys give us to help, um, in Pensacola?" And we brought the, uh, front porch program here. And there were some concept about funding, but when everybody knew about it, they came. Um, the next thing I want to say is that, um, the community impact is usually after the fact. Uh, those two meetings that were held in June, we came and we gave our input, but it was after the fact. And we felt like what was said was just, you know, something that you threw at the wall and just, you know, fell off and it had no impact. But it was after the fact in June and we showed up, uh, to most of the, of those meetings. Um, a representative form of government. I don't feel like I am being representative in what I feel and my concerns about learning. And it's just, it's almost like there's a group of people at the table who are making decisions for me, my family, my church, my community. And when we do give input, you know, it's, the train has left the station. Hey, it's too late. There's stuff that I want, stuff that I want to see done. But most of the time, when it comes to that urban community, we don't get anything. We get leftovers and we get somebody else's ideas. And that's just not right. Um, finally, there are cultural elements at work. Um, there's an old saying that most people who live in the urban inner city, we, we, we understand that to keep a secret, put it in a book. You want to keep a secret from, from, um, someone from the urban core, inner city? Just put it in a book because they're not going to read it. They're just going to walk by those books and not read it. So we're dealing with cultural things here that go back hundreds of years. There's a history of, of negated learning when it comes to the black community. You know, hey, you guys don't need to know. We will take care of it for you. And so it appears that we're dealing with outside forces, the University of West Florida, um, Pensacola State College, uh, other groups that's, that are telling me, I know what's best for you to learn. And I don't think that that's right. And, um, there's a great, um, impact that this library has on that area. And the cost of promoting learning, the cost of saying to other businesses and people who would like to come here, we support urban learning. And there's a price to get young men to learn and there's a cost and a price to pay when they commit crimes. I have a contract with DJJ. Every weekend, I work with kids from all over the county. And there's a learning curve. Many of those boys and girls can't read. There's nobody from the inner, inner city or from the city of the county saying, "We want to help you guys to learn. We want to do everything in our power outside of the school system." And, uh, that's not taking place. And it's not taking place now. There's no call going out saying, um, the cost of learning and, and what we need to spend on education versus crime. Uh, we're willing to pay that price after talking with community, uh, partners who live there and who are giving their input. Uh, there's not that kind of call. And usually they're, you know, you build it, they'll come. And, um,
Reverend, I'm going to ask you to start to wrap it up here.
But anyway, but, uh, but I just think and, uh, that their news, this council, uh, needs to reverse bill the, um, community center there, but keep the branch library where it's at. Spend the money, but I think that there's more than enough resolve in this county, in this city to build the kind of branch library that, uh, this community deserves. I am that I am. I am what I learned. And those kids are what they learn. They are what our city is, is giving them opportunity to learn. And if they're not learning education, then they're learning crime. And I want to, I'm, I'm going to come back down here. When we see the impact of crime in the coming months and years because of a lack of, of integrity involvement in learning, when those kids do not get on the train, we all have to pay for it. My daughter was killed in 2010, I mean, in, in 2003 because of a man who lacked learning and education. I personally have paid for the cost of children who have used crime as a way of gaining the ladders, of going up the ladders in this community. So please, please spend the money on, on, on the new center, but save the West Side Branch Library.
Okay. Dr. Pratt and Ms. Myers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to address your comments about, um, engaging the community at the risk of getting a little off topic, but I, I think that, that people, yeah, it is hard to follow what we're doing. And that's why we do have the district council members. And if your district council member's not responsive, you have two at large and the mayor. And I don't know what the other council members do, but I, I have built a database of all the people who've emailed me. I, I try and let them know of, of things. I don't post our agendas to them if, but, but I encourage anyone with any concerns to contact us, um, outside of these meetings. We don't, we can't solve the problems in these meetings usually, but we can start the dialogue. And so I, I think that, that often it feels like we're not listening, but, but we're listening, but we're not, we can't find the dialogue because there are so many people who want to be heard and, and it's, it's a challenge for us. And I'm sorry that, that we didn't hear from that community that, that now we're hearing from when it, when we were voting because I think that could have made a difference. But, um, I, I, I just think at this point, let's get the dialogue continuing. Um, the reference to education, one of the things this council's looking into now is a urban charter school. So we are on board on education and, and trying to make a difference in our community in that aspect. And, and I will say, uh, I was invoked in the question of the groups that are involved. And that was a long story, but I do think that, that Ms. Howe omitted the Friends of the Library even though they, just because they, you can't even talk about the library without the Friends. And so, so they're not an outside group. They are the library. And so, um, I do want to acknowledge all of the work that the Friends of the Library do and their community partners as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Burnett and I am a member of the community that we're talking about. I, hopefully I won't be very long because some of my concerns that I had, they've already been spoken by some of the other people. But for me personally, uh, I didn't know all of these years and years of this situation was going on. I don't know how the community is notified about it. But the first inkling that I had about something going on at Legion Field was when I got a postcard in the mail and there was going to be a meeting at the Corrine Jones Sanders Beach Center. And I did go. And I was honestly, I'm going to tell you how I felt when I got the card in the mail. I was happy. I was excited about it. And I thought, oh my God, what's going on here? You know, I actually got a card. And they're getting ready to do something at Legion Field, which is not too far from my house. I said, "And this is awesome that I'll have a chance to go and, and hear and see what's going on and have some input." And when I got to that meeting, I found out that it was not what I had thought it was going to be in my mind. That this was already a done deal and that rather than me feeling like I had an opportunity to be a part of something and that they were looking for ideas to try to put something together for Legion Field, it was already put together for Legion Field. And that they were just basically letting me know what they had done. And people did speak at that meeting about it. And I came away personally with the feeling of what I feel today. It's a done deal. Nobody actually came out and said, "The train has gone from the station" at that time, but that was the feeling of the meeting. So when I hear, you know, no one said anything, no one spoke or whatever, people did speak at that meeting. They really did. But it was just kind of smoothed over and I honestly left with the feeling that it was useless. Don't worry about it. It's a done deal. It's over. But then there, uh, was another card that came in the mail because some of the, the concerns, they said, "Okay, we will consider some of this stuff and we'll have another meeting." I did get another card and I was like, hmm, they really did send another card. So I went to the next meeting. And some of the changes were implemented or whatever, but the, the issues that came forth in reference to some of the changes that we're hearing about now, the concerns, you know, the, the location, those things, to me, I didn't feel like they were taken seriously at that point because the feeling that I had at that time was, it was a done deal. So what I would like to see or to understand is, you know, how do we get information to the community, say our community like this, that's affected ahead of time before the train leaves the station? When we realize there's a train on the way to the community, we would like to make sure that we're at the station to meet the train when it gets there. And, um, I don't know how to do that. So I'm, I'm new to all this. I'm learning this. And I say, as we learn better, we do better. So personally for me, I would like to do better because I would like to learn better. But I would honestly like to know, you know, how is it that we get this information from the ground level into our communities so that people will know? I even went to another meeting, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, at Fricker Center in reference to this, where they said, "If you have, you know, some concerns about the library, come." I was surprised to get that card because I thought it was a done deal from the last two that I had gone to at the Sanders Beach Center. And then to hear that there were still some people who had concerns, as I did, about this situation, I'm like, mm-hmm, maybe it's still on the table. But had I personally not gotten the cards in the mail, you know, I would not have known. So I'm sure you advertised, you know, maybe in the newspaper. Just this meeting today, I came to the last city council meeting about it. I knew you were going to schedule this special meeting. But when I left that meeting that night, because it was so long, you know, after you said you were going to do the special meeting, I left at that point. I honestly still didn't even know today, you know, how the next meeting was going to come by or when is this meeting? And my son happened to hear it. I think it was like the last comment on the, the news or something yesterday. And he said, "I think I just heard them say that they're having that meeting you were waiting to hear about tomorrow morning at nine o'clock." I said, "You're kidding?" And so I went online late last night to look, to see if I could find something about it. And sure enough, I saw it. Had he not heard it on our way, we were on our way out the door at the time, I would not even, even known the meeting was going on today. So if there was an advertisement of some kind, I missed it, you know, I, I don't know.
How did your son find out about it?
Excuse me?
How did your son find out about it?
It was, I think it was, uh, Channel Three, the news, at the end of the news report. And, um, we were going out the door and he heard somebody say something about this meeting tomorrow morning, West Side Library, you know, city council downtown or something. And he said, "Mom, I think they just said they're having that meeting you were waiting to hear about tomorrow morning." Uh, I said, "When?" He said, "Nine o'clock." He said, "You remember they said in the meeting it would be like nine o'clock in the morning?" He said, "I think I heard them say," because we were walking out the door and we're getting ready to turn the television off. So we just caught it at the last minute. Had we left earlier or turned the television off earlier, I honestly would have missed it and I would not have been here today. So I got up this morning. I called my boss and I said, "Hey, I'm going to be late." Because to me, this is important. And if I can say nothing else today, I just want you all to understand that the word is not getting out into the community that I live in, where we are. Whoever's representing us or need to represent us, and I know as a whole, you all are all supposed to represent us, but we have district people. But we are not getting the information on the level that we need to get the information on. And if we can start having somebody who can work with us in our community to let us know what's going on, I promise you, we have people who are very, very concerned about this city as a whole and particularly in... as a whole, and particularly in the community that we live in, because we, as everyone else, we wanna see our community rise up and be a part of what's going on in the city of Pensacola. And we are willing to do what we need to do to work together with everyone, but we need to know what's happening so that we can be a part from the ground level up, not when the train has left the station. Thank you.
I certainly would invite you to, um, I think you're gonna have a new council, um, person.
Yeah.
Um, I'm representing you, but it is whether it's one of your at-large council members, uh, Dr. Pratt here, Mr. Baer that's sitting out in the audience will be taking office in about two weeks. Uh, those two, and I think Ms. Canada-Wen will probably be, um, your representative without knowing exactly, um, where you live, is to work with them and come in, because the six years I've been on council, um, this has been a persistent complaint, and over those six years, we've gotten better along the way, believe it or not, than what we used to be. And, and, uh, the, I don't, I don't think there's ever a good way I can smooth over you not knowing what's going on in your community. I, I can tell you, though, on the, on the mailing, back when we were allowed to still mail out things that the city had on the ballot that they were interested in promoting, we did a mail-out to the residents of the city. It cost us forty thousand dollars for that one issue. And that, that was just on the postage alone, forty thousand dollars. And, and so, to do that for every meeting that we have is, is just prohibitive. It's probably the best way to do it, but it, we just simply don't have the money for it. Dr. Pratt.
Thank you. And, um, I also would encourage, people sit down, and I look up, this is the wrong person. I, I would encourage, um, the administration, they have a very generous advertising budget, and the advertising is directed, it seems, at people outside the city. And one of the things I consistently hear is the people inside the city would like to know what's going on. There's a public information officer, a, some new person who does something with advertising, as I understand, I'm not sure of the details, and, and they, entire marketing firm that, that probably know things about, you know, it doesn't have to be paper mailings, but what are the, the communication systems, you know? Do we need to reach out to certain community leaders within? Um, you know, each council member tries to communicate, but time is limited and resources are limited, but the mayor has plenty of money to do something to, to let you know what's going on in a creative way. It doesn't have to be mailings, there could be new ideas. Thank you.
And according to Northwest Florida Daily News is that our advertising agency spends no money outside of the city of Pensacola.
Right, to advertise outside, mm-hmm, yeah.
Ms. Myers.
Yes, um, uh, uh, of course, hear this, this complaint a lot, and being a person who grew up in a public housing project and low-income neighborhoods, uh, we generally did not know what was going on either, because there are different ways of communicating to people on different socio-economic levels. Um, and the West Florida Regional Planning Council has developed a very good citizens' participation manual, because they are required by the federal government and the state to do extensive public outreach on various projects. So, I'm, I'm suggesting, you know, we might want to utilize that, that agency and come up with some ideas of how we can do better outreach and make sure that, um, people in all communities know what's going on, on in their communities. But I would urge you to work with your, uh, at-large representatives here. You have two on city council and, and your new representative, Jewel Canada-Wen.
Mr. Spencer, Mr. Johnson, and Dr. Wu.
Okay, very quickly, we, we're, we're heading into, um, two diff, we're heading in two different directions, I feel, in, regarding this topic. We're, we're adding certainly, um, this communication issue, um, onto the library issue, but I recognize it's important. We're hearing from people that are saying, please communicate better and inform us better. I'm not gonna address that. That doesn't mean that I don't consider it to be important. I am gonna back up to something, and I want Mr. Count, Councilman-Elect Wingate particularly to, um, hear me on this. And, and that is, is I consider this, I consider, again, the endorsement of the current project to not preclude or exempt at all further discussion, and in fact, what I hope will be the, the implementation of increasing more, um, accessible outlets, is what I'll call them, resource outlets, throughout the, the community. Because I think we're, we're at the, the very historic crossroads as, in the, um, in the area of learning and access to learning. I mean, we've got, I think the issue is provision to the access tools. And those tools for access used to be limited to the bricks-and-mortar building that most of us, including Mr. Baer, described as what he worked at as, as a youth. It was that institution that I too used and was driven to if I didn't ride my bicycle and made it to the library. But we now have, it's, we, we have a daily shift in the, the emergence of learning trends. It, it's changing by the day. And think about the explosion, for instance, of tablet use. The, now, the issue is, how do we provide access to those tablets, to these new portals of, again, that become the portals to an almost infinite, um, supply of information? And so, I'm, I'm encouraged by Mr. Wingate's, um, um, sort of angst or agitation in that I feel that what he's reminding us is that we can channel, help channel that frustration and his call to arms to help make sure that we minimize the isolation within the community to resources. And, um, so I just, I wanna point that out. I mean, it would be great to have fresh food markets on, at every four blocks, so children could walk and get fresh produce, fresh milk. We, that's a, we're, that's a resource. We don't have that. So, I'm, I'm encouraged about the fact that our newest, our emergence of learning trends and how we get to resources is actually gonna help break down the barrier that existed for decades and decades to, um, to access. Thank you.
Dr. Wu.
I would, uh, like Ms. Dubuson to make her remarks first, and then I'll follow.
Mr. Johnson, what?
Put me under pressure here.
Go ahead.
Um, most of you know I walk around town, and in my hand, most of the time, as I'm walking around town, I've set up the keys to my house, my niece's house, and the library. I consider this little card attached to my keys the key to my life, actually. When I moved here to Pensacola, I chose the place that I was gonna live, because it would be within walking distance of a library, because I knew with my inner ear disorder that I would not be able to drive all of my life and that I could get to the library. I am the daughter of a librarian. I am the mother of a book lover who would be a librarian, except she decided to become a reading specialist. I know that books are the key to learning, lifelong learning, and the key to a good community is a good, strong opportunity to be a part of that lifelong system. Having said that, we are blessed to have the wonderful system that we do have here in Pensacola. And I, I salute the Friends of the Library, the city, the county, for everything they have done. And I hear those who have not been able to take advantage of this saying, we need more. Realizing where we are budget-wise, I think it is imperative that we look at the business model that we are actually using for each individual structure, as well as the whole system. For instance, our new library downtown was built with this wonderful coffee shop, bookstore concept in mind. However, it can only be open during the hours that the library is open, so that the sustaining revenue that might've been generated in the hours before the librarians were there and after the librarians were there is lost. Why? Because architectural revisions were made in a back room, not in a public forum. When we look at the decisions to change the structure and arrangement over at Legion Field, I sat in the meeting here in this room where the presentation was made, and the noise factor of the library room being right against the gymnasium was voiced over and over and over. And while Mr. Spencer is concerned that the sports activities might be impacted by the library to the negative, I have to tell you that the people in this room were worried that the library would be impacted negatively by the sports, not only because of the noise, but because of the parking, because of the crowd issue, and the fact that it's in a residential neighborhood, which would really impact how people got there. All of these things have been articulated, but they do not appear to get factored in when the final decisions are being made. So, it doesn't matter how many meetings we have, whether people get notified or not, if what is brought out at the meetings is just, oh, good, we got that out, you know, they vented, now let's do what we think we ought to do. We are using experts who are using models that are not Pensacola. We need to look at who we are today, who we're moving into being, and how it impacts our existing citizens and our future citizens, not what looked good somewhere else or what worked somewhere else. Models are nice for modeling, but we need to factor in our local stuff on a more direct basis. And I ask you, as council members, each and every time something comes before you, ask the city staff who specifically made a recommendation for change and how many citizens have reviewed it. Because I believe in the long term, we could find some of these, I'll just say, errors in assessment, we could find them sooner, so that rather than being after the fact, we would hear about them upfront. And, and there are people trying to figure out the meeting issue, I think that's a whole nother agenda item, so I won't go into it. But I thank you all for dedicating today's meeting to this purpose. I believe from an economic development point of view and from a community-building point of view, our libraries are one of our most critical elements, and please continue to work to try to find the solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Diane Mack.
Thank you, Mr. President, and council members. Summarizing what I have been hearing this morning, I have the sense that this council wants to find a solution for the West Side neighborhoods north of Cervantes. I hope that that is a correct impression. I would like to offer a suggestion that I think will give this group that did not hear soon enough, um, some hope and some real closure. And my suggestion is, please, you know, you're going to have a blue ribbon, you have a blue ribbon task force that's going to look at a five-year plan, you have staff that is going to be looking at funding for the long term. I think it would be absolutely wonderful if this council decided, voted, to form a task force of the stakeholders who live, um, in that part of the West Side neighborhoods most affected by the closing of the Cervantes Street Library. Please form a task force, get them involved, have them, then, then there is no problem with the communication. Get them involved in helping you find the solution for their part of this city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Myers. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Dr. Wu.
Well, I think that's a great idea, and, um, I will certainly entertain making that motion at the next committee of the whole.
Okay. Dr. Wu.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. President. Start off with to show you how important I feel libraries are. I, I grew up in a family that was very affluent, especially in the early days. And, um, basically, they worked very long hours. And, uh, turned out, my recreation was working to a public library, for fortunately, there was one that was close by. And I found out at early age, if you could go to the library and get a book, you could go to Europe. You could travel around the world. You could see universes you could never imagine by simply getting a little bit of card that allowed you to get everything in that area. The other thing that makes me realize how important libraries are, if you look at data on incarceration, seventy to eighty percent of people in prison do not have a high school education. See, if you wanna walk it backwards, if you wanted to reduce the number of folks in prison, you increase the number of folks who graduate from high school. What we're looking at here is not a question of whether there's a need, but an infinite pot of money. When they came to me and asked me would I vote for a West Side Community Center, my first reaction was no. How could I vote for a West Side Community Center when we didn't have money to fund the ones we had now? And I went to the administration, and I said, my problem is not voting for a community center, but what happens when that center gets built? Building it is only part of it. It might even be the easiest part. We do that at a local option sales tax. But then it takes money to keep that thing running every year. And I said, unless I can get administration assurances that there was money there to run it, I wouldn't vote for it. And the administration looked at me, and they says, we have the money to run it. And I said, in that case, I will vote for it, because the West Side certainly deserves to have a community center. If any section in the city deserves to have a community center, the West Side deserved to have it. But it's easy for us to say, well, you can have this, you can have that, but you have to look at the other reoccurring expenses to go with it. And if we're cutting back, we're talking today about cutting library hours. And then we're talking about adding, and, uh, the two just don't mix. And, and so, to make the story short, it is, I understand what the folks who've come and spoken today have said. But I also feel that we really have gone this far down the road, and at this time, to take all that money and not, and say, well, the heck with it, to me, is not being a good steward of what we're supposed to be, of the funds. However, I would like to commend Councilman Myers, because she has, and Councilman Brown Spencer, and I think several other speakers, we're, we're not saying either-or. And when I walked out the door and I heard Councilman Spencer said that, uh, it really, you know, I really wanted to come back and commend him and Councilman Myers for, for what they said. But we have gone so far down this that I don't see how we can let it go at this stage. But at the same time, we're not saying we have a deaf ear to the folks who have come here and to what you have expressed. And I believe that the city administrator, Mr. Reynolds, and, uh, the council executive sitting out there, they, they've heard what we've had to say. They've heard what incoming Councilman Wingate had to say, they've heard what Councilman Baer had to say, incoming. And I, I believe, honest to goodness, every effort, and Councilman Mac, I believe that every effort will be made to do. And, and in closing, I encourage us to think outside the block. We may not have a million dollars to build a new library, but we can buy, say, twenty-five of these and put them in a church, and have kids use them on a rotating basis. You can do that for a couple of thousand dollars. And you think of how many churches they are to serve your local community. Couldn't we buy desktops and put those into churches, where the children can come there and use that? And as Councilman Spencer says, you can on the internet, you're open to the world. And I don't see this as a versus, I see it as a supplement. I see it as something that a library could do as an outreach program. Instead of a bookmobile, you have five computers at this place that people can go to, you have opened that universe up to those folks. And as you said, not getting the notice, my first response was, well, it's on the internet, but you can come back and say to me, not everybody has a computer. And those that have a computer may not always have, what, internet interse, access? So, it may be on the internet, but if you have no way of getting to it, what good does it do you? So, in closing, I think that it's our fiscal responsibility, at least in my opinion, is what I'm gonna do, I can't tell anybody else. what I'm going to do, I can't tell anybody else what to do, to move forward with this. But at the same time, the voices that have come and spoken, I don't think will be forgotten. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Anybody want to wrap it up? Last word, Ms. Myers?
I don't think this needs a motion, but I think that, to sum it all up, that we realize and we do not want to put the skids on the plans that have been in the works now for a number of years that I've been on council for the Legion Fields. But I think that the staff and all of us clearly want to see resources where the West Side Library is and those neighborhoods over there. And we want the access issue to be addressed, the complete street concept and other ways to facilitate people getting to Legion Field, because a lot of people are going to want to go to Legion Field for the sports too, not just for the library. So I think that, to me, that's what I'm taking away from this meeting, is that we want to leave the door open, to explore the avenues of getting the resources people need over there in the West Side. And I will bring up at the next committee of the whole, Ms. Max's suggestion of creating a task force, maybe an advisory committee, that would allow those people to have input more effectively into what's happening with their communities over there in terms of them getting the resources they need for, you know, library and, like Councilman Spencer said, emerging learning trend access.
Ms. Howell, Mr. Reynolds, yes.
To end it on a different note, to show you how ironical life can be, I attended the very first discussion, neighborhood discussion meeting to build a triennial library over by Sam's Club. And believe it or not, a large group of people came to that meeting opposing the library.
Yes.
They didn't want it.
Didn't want it.
They didn't want the traffic.
Right.
I was sitting in the audience, absolutely aghast, right, Councilman? That here we are, bringing to them this beautiful concept and structure, and they were looking at us and saying it would be too much traffic. If you want to know why the four-way stops went up way before the library, it was because of the comment of the worry about traffic.
Well, now it's the best thing that's ever happened.
Exactly.
Everybody wants it.
Sanders Beach was supposed to be, I believe, what, 20,000 square feet or larger? And folks had us chop that down. So it's interesting, you know, it's, whatever we do, it's going to make somebody unhappy. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Administration have anything you want to wrap up with? Thank you, everybody, for coming and for your patience and your input and your love of our community. Rejorn.